Welcome to the County Commissioners Board Meeting this morning. We'll start by going around the room. Mary, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sure. Mary Sexton, show.
Sam Carlson, Commissioner.
Alan Gonya, Teton County Road.
Dick Snellman, Commissioner.
Joe Delwell, Commissioner.
Mike Johnson with Fairfield Lions Club.
Paula Jacobin, quick recorder.
Melody Martinson, Shoto, Canada.
Thanks, everyone, for coming. No minutes, but we will move on to road encroachments. We have one from Three Rivers. It's putting in a fiber line to a new construction. It is on... It's Township and Range. Second Road and 10th...oh, there it is. Yep. And Alan signed it already. What's your pleasure?
Northeast, southeast?
Northeast.
Northeast.
Yep.
And is that the actual road that's going under Second Road northeast?
Place a new fiber service line to home at 10th and Second Road northeast.
And who is it for? Just Three Rivers, it doesn't say. Thank you.
Yep. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We did a FLAP grant, which had to be in by March 31st. And it's for replacement for...
Okay, thanks.
The bridge on South Fork. It's signed by ourselves and Molly Ryan, who's with head of the Forest Service. It's been submitted. They received it in plenty of time. And there is a provision in there as a request from the historical group to possibly save the bridge. And all of that was accepted. And we're doing the MOU at a regular meeting because there wasn't time to do it before we submitted the grant.
So I guess I will move to retroactively approve the FLAP grant for the South Fork Bridge.
I'll second that.
Any questions?
Yes.
I just have some procedural questions. As you know, we came in, those of us with kind of the Teton Canyon Preservation Group, History Group, in February. And at that time, we asked you about the ability for the county to apply because you don't own the bridge. And I'm assuming then you researched it and using your engineering firm, you found out that, yes, you have to have an MOU. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And I think then, maybe early March, we found out that you were going to move ahead. I don't know that we were informed of the MOU. And then you asked us for our proposed mitigation. And I think, I was looking back at emails, and it was about mid-March, that we made a suggestion. But we all understand that you still have to go through a process, looking at environmental, historical, and all the other issues that the federal highways requires, correct?
Correct.
So that in a sense, our mitigation request was just an idea and very pre-decisional from the standpoint that no decision is made until they go through the process. Is that correct?
Yes. The process, that process will start if we get approved for the grant.
Okay.
So that will be next fall at the earliest.
Okay. So I guess I'm looking at the process. At that point, were you waiting to sign the MOU before we gave you our request, which was in mid-March? Why the delay in the MOU? I'm just wondering.
Delay? What do you mean?
Well, you knew you had to sign it. And you signed it the 31st, which was the last day you could sign it. Was that correct?
It was...
Yeah, we had to get a hold of the...
Molly Ryan.
We originally thought that Mike, Mike thought he could sign it. And the FLAP people sent our MOU back and said that it had to be Molly Sims.
Molly Ryan.
Molly Ryan.
Yeah.
Who's the area...she's the one above Mike in the Forest Service. So there was some back and forth there, which took about four days to get that done.
And when did you find out that you had to have an MOU?
It was the Monday before...it was Monday of that week. And then we had to work it out with the Forest Service and...
And that allows you to apply for it because, in fact, and I know it's coming up next, but I would like a copy of the MOU.
Yep, you can have a copy of that and a grant too.
Sure.
Absolutely.
So you found out then about the MOU. And that's when, I think, we told you what our mitigation was because our request to you was to make sure that you could actually apply. And then it was kind of not sure until you found out you had to do the MOU. Is that correct?
Four moving parts. There's the county, the Forest Service, the federal lands, and the engineering firm. So I mean, between...it was kind of a process to get it done.
Okay.
And there were differing opinions.
Okay.
At first, they weren't sure that we needed the Forest Service to have an MOU. And then the FLAP people decided, yeah, they should have an MOU, just to clarify who has what.
Because you don't own the bridge?
Correct.
No, they don't own.
Okay.
So it was a process, but we luckily got through it. And you're right, it was the day that the grant deadline was there.
Okay. Because we understood when we gave you our mitigation, at that point, that you knew you could apply.
At that point, the engineer's opinion was that we didn't have to have an MOU.
Oh, okay.
But with her discussions with FLAP, that changed over a two or three week period.
Okay.
So, and it's just complicated because of the ownership issues.
Which is, I know what we brought up initially in February, and we said, you know, because we were not sure either.
Well, no. Let's see, it's all belongs to the Forest Service.
Yeah, yeah.
You have to start with them.
Yep.
And say, hey, could we have the bridge or, you know, take care of it, whatever. But it still had to go through them, decide what to do with the bridge.
Well, and the other problem that came up is, one of the Forest Service personnel said, "You need to take ownership of the bridge first."
Right.
And we said, "Absolutely not until the grant is processed."
That was one of their proposals. So there was back and forth on the MOU.
Okay.
And interestingly enough, in one of my conversations with Mike, you know, it's Teton County did own the bridge for 10 years.
[laughing]
And Bud Olson talked the Forest Service into taking ownership back in the 40s or 50s.
Interesting.
I told Mike, "I need to go up to the extended care and take better blocks of chocolate than for that." And he said, "Yes, you should," because we wish we didn't know.
Yeah.
So it was complicated, but we got through it. And but the way it is now, we won't know anything until if we're approved or denied for the grant application.
You are the applicant, not the Forest Service.
Yes.
So you are the sole applicant.
Yeah.
And so when you go through the process, you'll have to go through the federal process, Forest Service process, and everything. You will be basically leading the application process.
Yep.
Correct, once? Okay.
And on the line item in there, there is a request for the Historical Society.
But you'll have to go through the 106 anyway, just like we talked about before.
Our engineer has been through that process two or three times. So we're...she's going to take the lead on that because it's pretty complicated, too.
Because this is the same grant that you applied for a couple of years ago that you abandoned, or very similar.
Well, did you...then you folks came in and asked us on the...you wanted to save the bridge.
Right.
Well, just the historical aspect of it. So it is...the difference is that upfront, we're acknowledging that the historical aspect of the bridge needs to be dealt with. And we added...Kathy added some mitigation funds in there so we can accomplish that. So it's a little different than the original application.
But there could be, say, environmental issues that come up. I mean, I still...you're still prepared that any other issues? Because I think last time, the historical aspect came up and you weren't...I mean, that there was a process, there's a federal process that I think some were not all familiar with.
Yes, and the issue was because we hadn't recognized the historical access of the bridge, it wasn't in the grant.
Oh, I see.
So it was the federal lands would not pay any mitigation. That would have had to been either on the Forest Service or Teton County. So at that time, we decided to back out of the grant and just start over so we can put the mitigation into the grant. So it's in the grant. And it is in this grant.
And is any mitigation, say, with the hydrologic aspects, given that that's kind of a pinch point there, that will be dealt with in the process under the environmental review?
They'll have to do the hydrological stuff, too. The other thing is, when we first did the original grant, it included calcium chloride treatment for the South Fork Road all the way to the Forest Service line. And we re-included that because the reason we dropped that out of the first grant is it was just getting so complicated and expensive, the match would have been a killer.
Okay.
And this grant has no match.
So it's no match at all?
Yeah.
Okay.
So this does include the rehab of the road from the bridge all the way to the Forest Service line up.
And this is still the forest highways? I mean, that's sort of the same type of grant that we did the Teton River Road on. Yeah, okay. Well, I think that answers, you know, my questions. Amy, did you have any?
Nope, I think they've answered things.
Okay. And again, we'll keep you guys in the loop, you know, where...and Kathy has worked through this process, so I'm pretty comfortable we won't have as many hiccups as last time.
What's her name?
Kathy...
Kathy Thompson.
Thompson.
And she's on the phone, Mary Ann. Oh, it's our...it's Amy Zacherson. I'm sorry. Thank you.
So when we find out anything, we'll let you know.
Okay.
But I think that it's sometime in the fall. It was like September.
Maybe September.
October, I think.
Might have been October. So it's gonna take a while because they have to list all the projects in the state. And then they go through, the committee goes through and thumbs up and thumbs down.
Mary?
Yes, Amy? There you go.
How does this affect the redecking that was talked of?
The Forest Service is going to do that regardless because there's no guarantee with this grant. And Mike and the Forest Service felt like that needed to happen.
Good.
And the reality is, even if we get the grant, then the hydrological studies start and we have to deal with the 106 study.
Good.
And it's not going to happen this year. It's not going to happen next year.
No, it's going to take some time.
It took 10 years last time, so...
It may take that again.
Yeah.
You know, you don't know.
Thank you.
And it's still up in the air if they're going to accept it or not. You know, so...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Much appreciated.
Any other questions on that?
Amy and Neil?
No, I think that was my main question, given the way that conversation's been going. So the information that's been shared is really important. Thank you.
You're welcome.
We need a vote on that.
So, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. We have a correction on our...
We need to do the MOU, too. I just made the motion.
Okay.
And Mary, we can get you copies of those before you leave.
Joe, thanks.
Yep, absolutely.
And the MOU for the FLAP grant was submitted 28th of March. And it was signed, and then it was signed again by Molly Ryan on the 28th also. So...
I would move to retroactively accept that MOU.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We normally distribute alcohol funds that come from the state. And we were informed that one of the recipients, their head leader had retired and no one else is qualified in their department. So we can't distribute half of that. And that's the Eastern Front, right?
Yep.
So we will be dispersing the full amount to the Center for Mental Health.
So Paula, you're a parliamentarian. Do I have to make a motion to rescind that from the last meeting?
I don't think you can rescind it, but I think that you give the explanation that because of this...
Just make the motion going forward.
That the full amount will go to the Center for Mental Health.
Okay, I'll move it. Because of the information received after the meeting, that Eastern Front does not qualify for this, I would move that we give 100% to the Many Rivers Whole Health.
I'll second.
Any questions?
What was that called? Many Rivers?
Many Rivers Whole Health.
Whole Health. And that's the combination of Center for Mental Health and Gateway Recovery.
Correct. Yep.
Many Rivers Whole Health.
And that took about nine months to come up with that name. Nine painful meetings.
Many Rivers.
Joe, I know that that was the funding that the Teton County Health Department used to offer the parenting classes, so...
No. This just goes to...
Right, it went to East.
Did they channel it to the Health Department?
Yes, they channeled it to the Health Department to offer those parenting classes. Is there...did you guys talk with Melissa about?
We did not. Under...we can only give it to the people that qualify for the state designation. I could bring that up. I have a meeting with Many Rivers Whole Health on Monday.
Yeah, I think it'd be appropriate to talk to Melissa before that. Because I know that Sharon Peterson, who was the counselor with Eastern Front Council who retired, I know that she worked with the Health Department to set up those parenting classes using this revenue because...
I'll talk to Melissa, and then I'll...like I said, I've got that meeting Monday at 9:00.
And they're hoping that they're going to be able to continue to offer those classes, which have been very well attended. Sorry, there's a minute. Just to go here.
So they moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you. There's a health task order that Melissa gave to us. And what it is, is an extension of the funds from Montana Department of Public Health and Human Services. They extended the date from ending on December of '22, and they've extended it to the end of June of '23.
And who is this for?
It's for the Health Department.
No, but wait, she has nine of them.
Yeah.
Two acronyms, but they're explained there.
You give me the acronyms, and I'll tell you what they are. MCHS?
CLCD.
Yep.
And DIS, SAN, Sanitariums, Epidemiologist, EPI.
Oh, these are ones I haven't even heard of.
[laughing]
Is it a new one?
No.
No, but what they have done is they took the old task force and then just drew a line through where they...
I'll get a copy of that.
Yes, ma'am.
Please.
But those two quarterly payments are $31,588 every three months till the end of June. So what's your...
Do you want to copy that, too, Mel?
Sure.
Might be. I would move to accept the task order or approve the task order.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And then we have a request for surplus rifles from the Sheriff's Department. They're no longer allowed. And they found a munitions company that will purchase them. There's four Mini 14s rifles.
I would move to declare those surplus.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
How will you guys advertise those for sale?
It's, uh...the rifles are not allowed to be sold to the public. They're fully automatic, so it's a niche deal. And Keith has worked out this...what he's going to do is trade them as...and get pistols and rifles that are more in what our needs are. We've had them for quite a few years, and they've never used them much. They're basically machine guns.
I can't imagine that we've used them all.
Yes, they haven't been used. I mean, they've probably been fired, but there's...
Sheriff Anderson was there when we got them.
Yeah, and they're not machine guns, but they're fully automatic, and they're not something that they need...Keith doesn't want them packing them in the cars because he just...it doesn't fit with his philosophy.
So this is like a licensed...
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
What did you call it? Ammunition dealer?
It's a gun dealer.
Me, ammunition dealer.
You can talk to Keith about it. He's registered with the government, so he can handle transactions like this because there's not a lot of places you can sell these guns, evidently.
Any commissioners report?
Um, not really. I've mentioned the snowfall we've had. I think most people are a little grateful for it, if not a little tired of it. But it does help.
Any public comment?
Mike? Yeah, I have a couple, so just to kind of set the stage. So I'm here as an individual. I'm here as a former taxpayer within the Teton County, the now-defunct Teton County Hospital District. But I'm also here primarily as a member of the Fairfield Lions Club. And we've had ongoing discussions about some of the hospital district money being funneled in the direction of the Fairfield Community Hall project. So I think we had a thought as a group, and again, I'm representing the Fairfield Lions Club and myself as an individual. So I just want to follow up on a thought, I guess, we've had. Obviously, you don't expect any action or any comment, but I guess we just ask for your consideration in this, kind of have to turn it into a math problem. So, you know, we're requesting $100,000 of the approximate $500,000 for our project, which I realize there are some other discussion points involved in that. But if we turn it into a math problem, here's what we're wondering, if this would be a possibility. So according to a...in a Kents article in March, the project that you want to build, the building you want to build in Shoto has an approximate cost of $2.4 million. Looks like you have available about $2.9 million through other sources. That includes the $500 from the defunct Teton County Hospital District. Okay, so...
We're just taking comments, so I'm not going to get into that.
Okay. But just, Mike, for your edification, I transposed a number in that story. I think I made it 1.91. It should have been 1.19. I corrected that in the subsequent story, but I bet you're not seeing the subsequent story.
I'm not.
So they really only have 2.4. You don't have...I said 2.8. I said something. Again, I transposed it.
So obviously, that blows my comments out of water. That's too bad. That wipes out the Teton County Hospital District $500,000, basically. 2.4, 2.4.
It doesn't change the $500,000. That's still there, Mike. What it changes is the amount in ARPA COVID funding. They had...Dick, do you have those numbers?
I do.
Okay, Dick can tell you correctly.
The hospital is the half a million. The ARPA funding, which we've received, is 1.19 million.
That's the mistake.
That was the transposition.
And then, and I don't have this acronym now. It's L A T C F monies, and that's 467,000. And then, over the time period, we've put monies in for a coroner fund in the Sheriff's Department because we didn't know what was going to happen with the funeral home here. And that's roughly $200,000 that's in that. So it comes up to 2.37. So it's almost 2.4.
And the proposed, I mean, the approximate cost of the building is exactly 2.4. So that's pretty much...
We're hoping.
We're hoping that it's...
It's with the engineering firm and the architect right now. So we're just...it's a shot in the dark.
Okay, so, I mean, that...obviously, that's a game changer for what I was about to say, but I think I'm going to continue on just because, I mean, just to make my point.
Sure.
So let's say then that, obviously, the numbers are...they haven't been formalized.
No.
And really, the costs of the building itself won't be finalized till it's finalized.
Correct.
So let's assume this then, for the sake of just trying to make my point. I had identified what I thought was maybe you had $500,000 extra, based on my reading of that article, which I granted and held. I apologize. I should...
I apologize.
No, that's fine.
That's on me, not on you.
Okay. So if that had been the case, what I was going to ask you, just to consider, not to take any action today, but to consider on behalf of the Fairfield Lions Club and the Fairfield Community Hall project, is do you have to co-mingle the three funding sources? Or could you allocate the money as you spend along through the project in such a manner that any excess...because you still may have excess, even though we've got a different number. You only need $100,000 of excess for us to come back and find a way to make this work for that hundred to be allocated to our project. So in the event that you can spend extremely responsibly and end up with $100,000 excess at the end of the Shoto building project, could you allocate that money strategically so that that $100,000 left was representative of the Teton County Hospital District funds? So that we could come back to the table with some hybrid and say, "Let's talk further." Because, I mean, you know, this is a...you know, this is a difficult situation for that end of the hospital district. Because we're not talking about the county. We're talking about a hospital district that's primarily Fairfield and Shoto. And we, the Lions Club, want to help the commissioners find a way to say yes. So at the end of the day, could we carve out $100,000 at the end of the Shoto project that was left over and identify it strategically as remaining funds from the defunct hospital district? That is...I pose that just to you for your consideration. And once you've considered it, you still can't even consider it formally until you've developed the $100,000 excess, you know, to have been able to build the building in Shoto and had $100,000 remaining.
We just take a comment today, so if it ever got to that point, we can put it on the agenda. We're not going to make any decisions on the public comment today.
That's it.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Thanks, Mike.
Hey, Mike, I have some items for you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, absolutely.
Any other comments or things from the public?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yep. If not, our next meeting should be the 4th of May?
No.
Oh.
We have a special one on the 27th.
Oh, yeah, the 27th.
That guy that wrote this agenda was on top.
Potential opening for bids for the Gypsy O'Farrell...
Can't get around that.
Potential opening for bids for the Chip Seal for, uh, Teton. 27th.
We've got no bids yet?
I thought I'd call Kathy in a second. When she's up.
Okay.
Okay, if nothing else, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Okay.
Thanks for coming. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary.
You bet. Do you give me copies of all that? I'll make copies.
Yes, ma'am.